Have any written?
Good evening CJ, I have one public comment to read tonight. Steve and Michelle Talona, 125 Main Street, Farmington, Connecticut. About us, together with Bruce Charette and Dan Bailey, we co-purchased the former Villanova property lot at 123 Main Street within the Farmington Historic District. In September 2012, Steve has been a resident of Farmington for 20 years and Michelle eight years. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to express our support for Evan Honeyman as the duly elected Farmington Historic District Commission Chair. This is the Evan Honeyman we know, the son of very good friends of ours. Steve has known Evan his entire life. It has been terrific to witness that Magna Cum Laude graduate from Bentley achieved his Summa Cum Laude MBA and recognized by the Hartford Business Journal as a top 40, under 40 person to watch. As we observe him display professional maturity, patience, poise, and a positive outlook through the turbulence swirling around the position of chair. He certainly is a top 40, under 40 person to watch and is a leader by example. The points we wish to make, while Evan was appointed to the commission, as were others preceding him, he was duly elected to the position of chair. The commission bylaws are specific. Evan's election has been upheld pursuant to the bylaws, state statute, and case law and three separate evaluations by law firms experienced in dealing with municipalities. As taxpayers, these evaluations are sufficient. It is imperative that the bylaws of any municipal commission, society, or committee be adhered to. Chaos results when subjective exceptions occur. It is important to acknowledge Jay Bumbara's dedication, support, and knowledge of Farmington's history. He is generous with his time and his efforts to preserve Farmington's historic character. We've witnessed it firsthand. Such passion makes Farmington a better place. His vote on the commission is equal to Evan's vote. The Farmington Historic District is to be managed and preserved for the pleasure of all, not just those who reside in the Historic District. We believe Evan understands this. His great, great, great grandparents donated generously to create aesthetically pleasing structures existing on Main Street today. We have been blessed with the good fortune to be able to afford to live in the district. Given Evan's legitimate election as chair, the commission on behalf of the residents of Farmington gives all of us an opportunity to reap the benefit of Evan's talents. Let's let the commission do its work. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to express our thoughts.
Thank you, Paula. Any other written? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, we will now move on to the second phase. And if you are participating via Zoom, you can virtually raise your hand. We'll lower your hand to confirm you've been called on. Please state your name and address and try and keep your comments to five minutes. And with that, I see John Renahan's hand up. Go ahead, John.
Thanks CJ. I'm reading a letter that I'll send to you Paula, but I thought I'd save you save you from reading it. It's dated today. I'm John Renahan. I live with my wife Kristen at 27 Main Street. Town council members, as your constituents, we are writing to share our view regarding the leadership of Farmington Historic District Commission. Our town has differentiated from other towns because of our proactive preservation of historic homes and buildings. We believe the eight members of the FHDC serve as critical stewards who are charged with preservation and protection of our Historic District. It has been brought to our attention that there is a dispute service chair of the commission in 2021. Based on our understanding of the situation, we strongly advocate for Jay Bumbara to serve as chair as we believe he is most qualified for the role. You were all elected to serve our town. Please listen to us on this issue and remember that the Farmington Historic District Commission is a nonpartisan town commission whose actions should never be influenced or governed by any Republican or Democratic committee. We are all counting on you to be more transparent and inclusive as you consider appointments for town committees in the future. There's 50 different residents that have signed it. I won't read everybody's name, but Paula, I'll send it to you so that you can put it in the record. And I just would make the final statement that, you know, I think we've spent and wasted a lot of money on legal fees which are completely unnecessary. And I'm hopeful that we can resolve this issue as a commission. And I guess what I'd ask of you as commissioners, just in going forward, that you pay more attention to who's nominated for committees and when you all vote unanimously for people, you take your role seriously. So thanks.
CJ, you're gonna call? I got it. I got it. Sorry. Tim Kelly. Is, Tim, you there? Your mic is muted like mine was.
This is Tim Kelly. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Great. 62 Westview Terrace. I would ask that we cover some basic questions in the high school presentation this evening. Number one, what is the square footage of the proposed high school building? Number two, how many discrete classrooms are in the new facility design? And then number three, what is the cost to remission and retrofit the 900 way? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next, I see Matt Hut Wagner.
Everyone, Matt Hut Wagner for Deepwood Road. I continue to be a supporter of the Farmington High School project. You know, if you walk around the building for any amount of time, you realize this project needs to happen. Now we just need to get it over the finish line. And I look forward to hearing the results from the survey and the financial presentation and what's next. You know, in terms of finances, I still think it's a good idea for the council to take a fresh look at the tax abatement programs we have here in town, especially the one for seniors. I believe this was on the council's goals and if you're working on it, that's great. You know, we're about to ask the town to support and fund a new high school, which again is desperately needed. So a fresh look at these programs might help. You know, anything we could do to help put this project over the finish line, I think would help the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other for public comment? Going once. Okay, I see no more hands up unless I missed any here. We will now move on to item D, consideration of special topics. With that, I would like to introduce Ira Yellen from Tall Timbers Marketing. Ira, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here and in service to the building committee and the community. My first visit was 1964 Miss Porter School. So it said, that's the first place I ever visited in Connecticut. So I have a long history, at least visiting the town when I first came to Connecticut. So it has a special place when I was in college. Anyway, thank you. If you can put up the slides, please.
Ira, are you in control if you would like to move the slides?
Excuse me?
You were actually given control if you would like to move the slides.
All right, let me, because my screen is not active yet for me to take over.
Okay, I can do it.
Yeah, it's not allowing me to move anything forward here. Okay, should I just click on this cat?
You can just say next slide and I'll move it forward for you.
Okay, well, this is just an introduction and the logo and that. This is the report from the, for the building committee. The newsletter and survey that was sent to all Farmington households, which include Farmington Unionville in January 2021. Next. A little about me, I didn't go on too much here. I've been in business over almost 40 years, lived in Glassbury around 25 years and has retained to help with the project of the goal of informing, obviously, the Farmington residents about why new high schools being recommended and to respond in a timely manner using various communication tools to town residents' questions. My background involves that in order to get these approved or understood is that you can never overdo communication. I've managed, been involved around 60 school projects over the last 30 years. And the most recent ones in the last couple of years are Mansfield, which was a new elementary school, Wyndham was to redo at a high school. East Grandby, a combination of a solar array and a high school update. Now, if you need all three of those passed in the referendum. Okay, next, please. Obviously, hopefully you all got this. This is the newsletter. We wanted to combine a newsletter, Q and A, to at least create what we call a baseline because this project spending, you know, kind of fits and starts. And so this was a quick overview and this newsletter will be two more of them to keep every household informed. The number one complaint when we do these kind of projects, people say, I never knew anything about it. And the way you cover that, you can't assume people go on a social media or they're on the website. You just have to cover every household. If they read it or not, or to get stuck in junk mail, it's not that we can do it. The survey went out, was 99.8% delivery. We checked with the post office. So people said they didn't get it. They usually threw it out by mistake. Next, please. So the first step again was understand what the community does and does not know about the project. The survey is part of comprehensive planning process based upon the building committee's proposed recommendation to build a new high school facility on a current municipal complex. It was sent to every household. The responses provided the building committee with best ways to communicate on the progress of the project. The way I look at it, just in order to keep in front of, keep the public engaged or at least knowing what's going on is up until when the referendum gets posted and following election laws is providing that information, being very objective, fair, and transparent. There's two components. One is kind of a quantitative finding, which I'm going to share with you some highlights. And the second is a qualitative or anecdotal comments. The full report will be available. This is a summary to do a full one, probably take an hour. So this will be probably posted on the website. We'll be done by the end of the week with a comprehensive one. We had a lot of stragglers and we just said, let's just put them all in there. Next, please, Cat. Anyway, this was just to refresh, you don't have to read all this. This is what it looks like. So it can be scanned. We use a company in Minnesota where it was sent out and they scan everything. So it's readable. And given the amount of number, I'm glad we did that because we had to tally 60 more. My wife and I over the weekend were sent this extra. So it's easier to do by machine, but it provides the most objective way of doing it with comments. I assume you all got it and filled it out like you should have. Next, please. Anyway, here's the highlights. There was 11,600 households. You have 20 population based on the Circ Town profile of 25,422. It's an estimate. When the census comes out, you'll probably get the right number. There were 1,111 responses. It's a 98% response rate. It's the highest I've ever seen of doing these surveys in the 20 years I've been doing this. It's usually 2 to 4%. Your error margin was negligible, barely 3%. That means the response had a confidence level of 97%. That whereas if every household filled out the survey, it would not change very much, maybe a half a point here and there. So I could say legitimately, these survey results are good as a planning guide going forward. Because the error rate was so minimal given the response. And I attributed two things. One, people are home. Therefore, they had the time to do it. And the second thing, you're interested in the project. Next, please. Oh, excuse me, leave it there. I wanted to break out here what was interesting though. The majority of people who responded from 11 to 20 years. What we anticipate that being is that it's aging older Gen X, baby boomers, and Eisenhower generation. And so they're the biggest response. We can read from this, less so with parents and younger people who live in account. Next, please, Cat. These were the people, which is important for you to understand who responded. They were working full time or part time and retired. Part of the thing is your retirement community, anyone over 65 makes up 17% of your population. Your retired was around 45%. So what we're seeing, this is a little skewed based on your population. But we take into account that once we take into account, other people didn't fill it out, it probably will level out a lot more. So it was again, some people filled out a little bit more. There might have been two people felt a survey. It happens every time, once in a while. Do you have a child in school? There's 239. And which represent around 450 kids, there's over 4,000 if I'm correct. Kathleen, you have over 4,000 students. So the percentage return was pretty low from parents and particularly from elementary parents. The thing that was a good sign, they are aware of the building committee's work. I would take somewhat and yes, which is 87% and no. So that means there's an awareness you can build upon. And the awareness might have been the newsletter. We attribute part of the newsletter, part of it probably from news. Next slide, Cat. This is where we're trying to, the survey is designed to find out what they know, how they want to get information, how important it is to them. So these questions are designed to find out, you know, how important it is. I know it's fine tuning here, but people have really distinguished things between very important, somewhat important, important. So it's quite clear, people think this project's important and it's important to communicate them pretty regularly. Again, from my experience, you have to get kind of upfront. You don't want to wait till the last few weeks and this kind of, kind of says, please give me more information as it occurs. And they were aware of the statement of needs. And which is a good sign. I didn't think it would be this high. So between yes and somewhat, that's a good sign. They are reading or they have been to the website or learned about it. So at least they got a baseline of what, you know, why the project is proceeding and what's it all about. Next, please. These are ones where we were asking, we're asking to prioritize now. So previous information is just the basic facts of who presented. And what we're looking for to the top ones here of a high school project priorities to focus on or to pay more attention or to think this is important for them to understand. And, you know, it's enhancing the current educational programming. That doesn't mean it's not, that kids aren't learning and graduating, going to college. The current facility limitations at 76%. Improving the learning environment facility, 79%. Security and safety, COVID in there, 81, and cost and tax, 84. I look at these as your top five things that people want to know pretty regularly. And I think they're pretty close. When you have a nine point spread, they're all kind of equal here. And given the amount of retired people, I'm not surprised that cost and tax, they were the number one respondents to the cost and the tax of the project. We had under 80 comments from 10,088 surveys. There were some damage to 23 surveys. We couldn't read them. They were just too damaged. So of the comments, these are the five cost taxes, negative, negative comments about the project. A lot of, some were not about cost and tax. They just didn't believe in the new high school. And so we just left it as such. There are, you know, I didn't want to show you all the comments here. I just kind of lumped them into these general areas. We've done this enough where they kind of fall in these kind of buckets. COVID 19, ADA, safety, kind of security. 12 comments, questions, some pretty intelligent questions, a timeframe, the enrollment, the accreditation came up a lot. That was 27. And there were recommendation, general comments. The recommendations could have fallen into questions, but they were very specific. Why don't you do this? Why don't you consider that? Where the questions are very specific questions. And so many ways, when I go through these and I can probably provide the building committee how to integrate because they were very similar, just some asked questions and some had just statements. And positive comments, which is, this is pretty high. Usually the comments we get, we say you have 31 positive comments about the project. So I thought that was a pretty good sign. And the last slide. So what do we get from this? What we need to do in our outreach? There was general interest out, you know, building a new building, what's the enrollment projections? And I was sent that report and it looks like there's a little uptick over the next 10 years. So people want to know that some of our projects, like we did in Mansfield, they were losing 20% of the population for elementary schools, but it was still supported. So at least it shows that. So it's important to demonstrate that. What are specific educational enhancements about the teaching and learning and the facility itself? So they're looking for some value. It isn't just about the building. What's going to happen differently in there? How if more efficient, the teaching, is the teaching going to be different? So I think these are things to focus on where you call value statements. Tax implications, pretty standard. I'm sure you'll be hearing those numbers. They want to know what, you know, when bonding a project like this, what's it going to cost? And the COVID safety, a lot of safety and health issues came up in the comments. So I included those. So my observations about going forward, which not necessarily, I don't want to get into recommendations right now, was reach out to pre-K, sixth grade parents. It's quite evident, they're not seeing that this is probably going to affect them the most of having a new high school in three or four years. So that's the group that needs to be educated to learn more about it. And you know, you can read what you wanted to that, but they're the ones that responded at least to the survey. But they're the ones going to be most affected by it. Nothing surprising, the survey results except for the number retired. Over 65 years old make up 70% of your population, but we're 45% respondents. It's a little higher than normal, but you know, it's pretty typical. And the survey, I think, provided a great insight how the building committee should communicate and provide information to residents so they can make an informed decision at the referendum. So this is about as subjective as I get. And I'm sure you'll be all welcome to read the raw data and information of all the questions and answers that come in, you know. And again, like I said, normally I probably with the building committee, we're going to do a longer meeting to go through in more detail. But I think this is what you probably need to know how the community is seeing this and how they're responding to it. And so generally, I'd say it's pretty positive.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that, Ira. Is there anyone from the building committee with anything to add before we open it up to questions to the council? Okay, for council members, I can either go down the list. If you want to raise your hand, you can do so and I will call on you. I see no hands up.
Can't believe I did not get a job.
I'm sure we've got some hands hiding out there. Okay, why don't I go down the list and just to see, I'm going to ask you all if you've got any questions. Peter, any questions at all?
Yeah, I raised my hand CJ, but just. One thing that's interesting on the over 65 population, with the amount of elderly facilities we have in this town, would that skew the results a little bit higher than usual? Or would you see this generally in your regular surveys? Just, I think we have close to five facilities of over 65s living there.
Yeah, probably good to go in those communities a little bit, explain the project a little bit more. But majority of residents responded in over 20 years. That means when they bought their house there, if they bought a house, because 95% of respondents own a house or they have a condo. So that was, I did not put that in. I should have. So 95% of the people responded identified that they own either a house or a condo. And only 5% rented. So I don't know what the facilities are, the condos or assisted living, where they buy into it or whatever. And so when you're seeing that, these people probably bought their houses when they're probably half the value what they are today. And so therefore, when they see all this stuff, they're putting it in the context of what they remember versus what is in their life. Because, you know, they're living in a great community. You're seeing the value of their house go up, probably no mortgage on it. And so they have a certain kind of frame mind. This is pretty standard. It's not negative. It's just the way people see things. And when people retire, you know, they're living on fixed incomes and we're obviously concerned about it. But I don't, I think it can be overcome. I've had communities where it's been higher level. When I, you know, I'm trying to think of a village out in Southbury, where, you know, where the building committee literally lived for two months. You know, in order to answer questions about the big project, because they represented a high level of that. So it gets into communication. All this is usually that way, Peter.
Gary, any questions? You're muted on still, still muted, Gary.
Hello, I'm sorry. Ira, I see that, you know, the question here went out and it looked like we didn't get a lot of response from the younger generation with younger kids. Do you think we can target them specifically? That they would help us out with this project?
Yeah, I interpret that, that either the kids are home, you know, the parents are so busy between their job. And this was probably an oversight or not a priority within our day to day living. Because that was pretty low from doing these surveys. I would usually see double the parent response. So I'm a true, not for disinterest. It's just their days are swamped with the kids, working at home, COVID. And they might inadvertently look at this as junk mail. It's very, it's very possible that, you know, they, they look at these kinds of things and read it. I'm not saying it's all the people, but they might have set it aside. It's because the way they're living their lives. But, you know, if you're retired, I mean, if you've done surveys of people over 60, 65, even read junk mail. And so it's how people read it. So we take into account, but we believe that a very limited error margin. I absolutely agree. We have to communicate on a regular basis to pre-K to fifth graders, fifth grade families. Because as you probably know, enough saying obvious, they're going to be most affected with a new building or not.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Brian, go ahead.
Thanks CJ. Ira, I really liked this report and thank you for doing it. It's something that we should have done a couple of years ago and I'm glad we're doing it now. I really appreciate your observation that we should be focusing on the families that are most going to be affected by this, which are the pre-K to sixth grades. But my question is on something I saw in the comments. And that is, I don't want to pull out just very tiny, specific pieces of information, but I was curious to get your feedback on, should we read anything into the fact that we got like 70 negative comments and 30 positive comments? How might you address that?
I think it's a reflection of the people who are over 65 retired. And so it's, keep in mind, you had over 1,100 and it's only 70. So it's a percentage, it's actually lower than I normally would see. Because at a high return rate you had, it's the percentage is pretty small. And no matter what kind of product you can do, I rarely ever see positive comments. So the 31 comments are to me outstanding because that hardly happens. You might get four or five on a survey, but you know, 31, even though it looks slow, but it's a percentage of response. That was pretty good.
That's good to hear and that absolutely addresses my question. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just for a point of interest, we did actually have a survey a couple of years ago. Ed can recall when we had our committee.
Or do we?
We did. Go ahead, you're up.
I'm sorry, were you referring to me CJ?
Questions? Yeah, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so I think my questions were somewhat in the line of the other questions asked. I'll just ask a general question, Ira. Compared to other surveys that you've conducted for school projects in other communities, is there anything unusual or that stands out with our survey results?
No, it's, like I said, I think it's generally positive. I didn't see, I mean, you're always going to get people, if they ask for a dollar more in taxes, they're never going to be happy. And there's nothing you can do. We use the bell curve. You got 10, 80, 10. And so you tend to get a lot higher, you know, the 10% complainers will hire on this. And so we rescue it, but then we take the whole population. And if we had more results from the young parents, it would, it would show the other way. But it's, this is not, there's nothing atypical other than the amount of responses you got, which actually give the very high confidence of these findings. I mean, I would go into the senior communities and just explain and say, we're listening to you. And sometimes that's enough to settle things down. And nothing, I would not engage, I think you should engage the senior population. You got baby boomers over 65 and they tend to support public school projects even in their older age. You know, they might be their grandparents, they see their kids. And if they have multi-generational, I don't, I'm trying to find a multi-generational population Farmington, but I couldn't get any statistics on that. I'm sure there's some because of COVID going on.
Thank you very much for your feedback and the survey results and your additional recommendations, Ira. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Joe or Chris? Okay.
CJ, I was just, you know, I was, I was very surprised or, you know, troubled by the most affected group or population being the least responsive. But Ira, and I don't know, you know, the history of this first time when, you know, this went forward. You know, and setting aside where you fell on that project before and the debate over it, there was, there was some argument over whether Argument over whether there was misinformation in the community. And did any of that, you know, in terms of. Where people were getting their information from, did, you know, that first project find its way into your results of this project and, and, you know, suggestions and how we better tackled? What may be possible misinformation that was around the first time?
I'll share the survey finding, I didn't put it in here. We asked people, how are they currently getting information? And then we asked them, how would they like to get it? And they were, they were getting from the school newsletter and the town website and number one town newsletter. But on the top three was word of mouth, that's how they're getting information. Then we asked them, how do you want to get information? And that came in last. So my sense is the word of mouth was driving it because that's how they're getting it. But when you ask them. And I'll show you these statistics, they don't want to get information that way. So if they get word of mouth, I'm scrolling down, stop and chop, and I'm talking to a neighbor. Let alone if someone's from the school system and, you know, whatever the case may be, you know, people gossip. And if you have a certain attitude and they're saying, well, you know what's going on there. This gets into other areas of communication that involve, you know, the teachers, the principals, and how they talk about it to the project. It's very, very important. And so I think what happened before the word of mouth overwhelmed any sort of real information. And so this survey confirms, you want to minimize that completely and stay in front, what we call in our business, agenda control.
Okay, no, that's wonderful. Thank you. And thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Great, Ira, thank you very much. I think we all appreciate that presentation. It gave us a lot of great information. I would say the council can then look over all the full and complete comments. You know, as we go through this process a little more.
Yeah, thank you CJ. I want to thank Kat, who's been actually excellent. And Kathy and Meg, it's a great team. They, I wouldn't have got this far in getting this way as efficiently as we did. Without your town support there out of the, out of the town manager's office and with Kathleen and Meg giving a lot of good feedback and the committee too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to number two, financial forecast by Joe Swetki. Joe, I hand it to you.
Thank you CJ. Okay, Kathy asked me to update the financial forecasts based on what's happened in the past year. So when it went out and did it, and as you know, this forecast was actually given to a year ago, just slightly more than a year ago. And there's some reminders about the forecast. It's based on historical experience that we use to generate our future assumptions. There's a lot of variables in any forecast that can be impacted by any number of things, you know. Local policymakers, state and national policymakers, and as we learned this past year, world events all can impact a forecast and especially a financial forecast. What you have in front of you on the screen is. Should look very some, very familiar to everybody's on the council. This is the tax and budget worksheet format that we use in our budget documents. And that you use during your council deliberations, especially on the last day when you say, when you, when you set the budget. Just to go over some of the columns, the first column is the FY twenty twenty one actual budget. That's the budget we're living in right now. This is the budget that you adopted. Last May of twenty twenty. And as it shows, it has an increase, overall increase, well, it doesn't show here, but this budget had an overall increase on the expenditure side of point three five percent and had a zero tax increase. Thanks to a significant reduction in capital appropriations from the previous year. The next column of FY twenty one twenty two is to project, projected budget. And this is a combination of amounts, some are projected and some are actual, actual. A lot of what you see in that column, you're going to actually see in less than a month when Kathy Egan presented, or Kathy Blonsky, I'm sorry, presents a recommended budget. To you on March ninth, a lot of those numbers you'll, you'll see again at that time. The remaining columns FY twenty two slash twenty three to twenty eight, twenty nine are are the financial forecast, and they're based on following assumptions. The first assumption is that the board of town budgets will increase about three percent per year. This goes back historically, looking at averages and seeing that, as a rule, roughly, there's roughly three percent increase per year amongst those two components. The debt service numbers are includes existing debt, all the debt we've issued up through this point in time. Plus any future debt issues that were, that are planned based on the current adopted capital budget. So in other words. We looked at the capital budget that you adopted last year, looked at what was bonding, what it wasn't included for bonding, going out for the next seven years. And incorporated that into the debt service numbers, the debt service line. So when you see that, that line there, again, it's the existing debt, which is any debt issued up through this. Right now, plus any debt based on what would be issued in the capital budget. The future debt issues include things for roads, fire apparatus, fire facility renovations and school renovations. This, this category, as you go across and look at the numbers closely in a minute. It, it projects that debt service will hover about around eight million dollars per year through twenty eight, twenty nine, again, based on existing debt, based on the cap, adopted capital budget. And the capital improvements line, the next line down in the appropriations expenditure section, that is the. Three percent, what that equates to is three percent of the total of the sum total of the education town, BOE pensions and debt service line. So in other words, if you, if you total up those lines in any given year, they will, the capital improvements line will equal three percent of the total of those four lines. Dropping down the grand list numbers. The grandest numbers for twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two are actual numbers. The, obviously, the twenty twenty one is the grandest that we used for the adopted budget. And the twenty one, twenty two grandest numbers are the numbers that were released last, last week by the, by the assessor for the twenty grand list in October. October one nineteen, twenty twenty grand list. Going forward, what we did is we updated the grandest numbers and the forecast and the projections. So there's been some slight increases there based on the past two years where we had good grand list experience. We brought that forward into the future years to the next seven years out. Should note also in these years that there's, there are two years where we built in a revaluation. Year twenty three, twenty four, and in the very last year, twenty eight, twenty nine. So when you, when we get down further into the tax and lower calculation, you'll see some different numbers, but that's because. The, not only was the tax rate impacted by the expenditures and the revenues, but they were also impacted by what we think revow would do in those years. And then the revenue categories, those are just the non tax revenues that we budget for each year. For the most part, we use a ten year forecast on those unless we know something is happening going forward. We try to, those are really cyclical, they're very. Economic driven, other than, well, even state grants are to an extent, but most of them are really cyclical, they're, they're really economic driven, the economy, the economy affects them. Quite a bit, sometimes good, sometimes bad. Excuse me, I'm going to jump back up to the hundred, the line that's highlighted in yellow under expenditures, hundred and ten million dollar bond issue. Yeah, this is the projected bonding for the new high school project. It's based on the direction that the town council gave to the high school building committee last year for their maximum municipal effort or municipal amount. The timing of the issue is based on a draft schedule prepared by the architect for how the project would proceed if it's successful at referendum. So they basically said, this is what we, how we think things will fall, this is when certain things will happen. The timing of the bonds is based on the schedule. The, the bond issue schedule assumes a successful referendum sometime in either late spring or early summer of this year. Start of design work by the architect immediately after that, in other words, they would, once the approval was get, gained that referendum, design work would start. And that construction on the project would begin about around September of twenty twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two. It would end during the summer of twenty twenty five. So you have a three year, three or four year timeframe there. So you're starting, you'd actually break ground, word contract break ground in the fall of twenty twenty two and in the summer of twenty twenty five. Based on the schedule, we looked at cash flow needs. And we figured that the best scenario right as right now, based on the schedule would be for bond issues. So. And then we thought that the best way to show these bond issues, and obviously there are a lot of variables, but best ways to show these bond issues was to. Have them all take place at the same time each year, just for comparisons purposes. So for this forecast, we did the bond issues in January of each year. However, the timing of the bond, of the actual issues and the amount of each issue may vary depending upon the timing of the project, cash flow needs and market conditions. But again, we needed a basis for where to start, so we used January of each year. Based on those assumptions, in January of twenty twenty two, we would do a twenty million dollar bond issue. In January of twenty twenty three, we would do a forty five million dollar bond issue. In January of twenty twenty four, we would do a twenty five million dollar bond issue. Then January of twenty twenty five, we would do a twenty million dollar bond issue. Because the first bond issue is projected for January of twenty twenty two, there's no debt service impact or tax impact in twenty one, twenty two. So if you look down the bottom below, you'll see that. There's no impact, there's no debt service for the, for the, any issue in twenty one, twenty two. The first impact would be for that, for that first issue, that twenty million dollar issue would hit in twenty two, twenty three. And that twenty two, twenty three debt service, the debt service we forecast would be about one point two million dollars. However, if you look right above it, that service for existing debt and projected debt actually drops off one point one million dollars in that year. So because of that, the impact on the tax rate is only seven, seventy seven dollars. The, the increase to the tax rate is basically seventy seven dollars. So it's a lower, it's a lower increase that year because you're, you're taking advantage of some debt dropping off, some older debt dropping off. The increase in twenty three, twenty four, it, the increase in the taxes in twenty three, twenty four due to the high school debt service is about a hundred and eighty nine dollars. Just giving like, this is, we're talking about an average house, assessed house, right now, an average assessed house is just slightly below two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. So that's, again, that's the assessment, not the market value of the house. In twenty four, twenty five, that service increase, payments would increase by one point seven million dollars and the tax increase would be ninety eight dollars. Little over ninety eight dollars, twenty four, twenty five, that would increase, that serves for the high school, increase another one point seven million dollars. It'd be an increase of ninety four dollars and twenty six cents. And twenty, twenty FY twenty six, twenty seven. The debt source of the project almost reaches its peak at about seven point nine million dollars per year. The increase, the tax increase as a result of the increase in the debt service would be about nine dollars. So you're pretty much peaking out at that point, you're starting. And it, its impact on taxes starts to drop off dramatically. And then twenty, after twenty six, twenty seven, that service peaks out. And you begin to see a decrease as the interest cost decreases until all debt is finally paid off in twenty, twenty forty five. The MP can, with the peak in debt service after twenty six, twenty seven, it would no longer contribute to any tax increases going forward. It's pretty much what the forecast looks like. It's, it's, you know. The yellow line down below does show that what the increases would be due to the, due to the increase in debt service. You do see that there are tax increases every year, though, in the forecast based on the various assumptions that we made. And then, you know, but of that, of those increases, the portion that is related to the high school. Project is, is just, it's a portion of it. It's not, you know, in some cases, it's not even the, the overall writing, driving factor for that year. Glad to take any questions.
CJ, could I just add one thing? It's Kathy.
Yes.
I can't figure out how to raise my hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, anybody who can't raise their hand, just do it.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, and Joe mentioned it, but just to be clear, is that on the capital improvements going outward and all the. That we are putting in the Friar report on and all the existing debt, that's one thing that I think people had asked about quite a bit last time around to make sure. That all the other things on the capital plan are incorporated into this forecast. So anything that is in the capital plan, our roads, and, you know, we have a potential firehouse project. There's the Friar plan for all the element, all the existing schools, that is all incorporated into that plan. Joe did mention it, but I just wanted to say it again because. I know that that was a very important topic to people, so that is in this forecast.
Right, just, just to follow up on that. On the Friar reports, two point seven million dollars of bonding authorization is included in the capital budget or in the debt service amounts. The existing debt service amounts going forward. So there is, you know, there was a factor in there for, for the Friar report and for the other schools. It just, you know, they weren't forced out of this project.
Great, thank you, Joe. I will now take questions from the council. Ed, first hand up, go ahead.
Thank you CJ, and thank you, Joe, for the presentation. Very much appreciate it. My question is, so right now I know that, you know, interest rates are near historic lows. So I'm wondering, can you tell us, what are the assumptions on that hundred ten million dollar bond issue? What's the yield you're assuming? And is that a twenty year maturity?
All of the issues are, are twenty year maturities. Again, wanted to keep it apples to apples, so I kept it at twenty years for all the maturities. The interest rate assumptions vary. Right now, interest rates are very low for, you know, municipal debt. It's very, very favorable, but what we're actually seeing is. Rates. Instead of taking, instead of actually offering rates in the marketplace now, what, lower rates in the marketplace. What's happening in a lot of instances is you're getting a two percent or a three percent rate. But you're also getting a premium. In other words, the buyers of your bonds are giving you money back as opposed to giving you a low interest rate. And because they give you money back, it drives it, the true interest rate or the net interest rate actually is a low interest rate. But when you're paying the bonds over the life of the, over the course of the twenty years or the twenty five years, whatever you choose. The interest rate per year could vary anywhere from two percent to five percent. So what key is key now is the lack, because they're giving you that money back, they're assuming that you're going to use that money to pay your interest costs. Over the life of the bonds. So.
That money that they're giving back, is that annually or is that?
No, they give it back to in one lump sum.
In one lump sum at the maturity date or at what, what point?
At the, at the close.
At the close, okay.
At close. So, so to give you an example, and I factored some of that into, into these forecasts. Actually, to answer your question, the overall assumption for interest rate was two point seven five percent. That was the average that we netted it or averaged it out each year at two point seven five, which is a little high for the market right now. But again. Also, to offset that, I did use. Some factor for a premium, in other words, a give back of money from the bond buyers. So in some cases, on some of these issues, we've used up to five percent of the actual issue would be given back to us. So in some cases, like in a forty million dollar issue, you're going to get back like, you know. You're going to get back over two million dollars. They're going to, at closing, they'll give you back to two million dollars. And I mean, I did factor that into these, these debt service numbers. So it, it, again, you, I amortized it at two point seven five percent, but then I offset it with, with the money that. Assumed that we would get back through, through a premium. So that in most cases, the net interest cost would probably be closer to the, and on these issues right here, your net interest cost is probably closer to two point. One five, two point eight, two point one eight percent.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And one more follow up question there on interest rates. So you said two point seven five is the average, and you said the current rates are a little bit lower. Given that rates are so low right now, is there, are there any other bonds that the town currently has that we can? Refinance at these lower rates and take advantage of those savings right now?
Unfortunately, there is not. We've, we're, there's nothing that would give us, what you want is you want at least two percent savings. There's a, if you have a four percent bond, you want to be able to get a two percent bond when you refinance it, that type, that's simplistically. And we don't have anything that really qualifies. The only thing that we did have that qualified is. Our, is some debt that we cannot refinance, the state is, we have a clean water fund loan with. is, are, is some debt that we cannot refinance, the state is, we have a clean water fund loan with the state of Connecticut, and we looked at the possibility of refinancing that. And the state will not let us refinance that because that will, it'll complicate their, their debt program, their debt. So they've asked us not to refinance it, or they've asked us to get, to get permission from them before we refinance it. So we've, we've not done that. But the other thing too is, in some cases, our debt is low, and what we're seeing is some, some, some debt is actually trending up a little bit so that we, it's not favorable to refinance. The US Treasury is actually up over 1%. You know, when we issued, the last time we issued in September, the Treasury was around 0.7. Now it's up around 1, 1 point. I think yesterday was, or last Friday was 1.13 or something like that, so. The spreads are tightening a little bit for, for refinancing at this point, unfortunately.
Gotcha. And, and since rates are, look like they'll kind of creep up going into the future, it would probably make sense that, you know, a project like the high school project that we try and get that to, to referendum and try and get to that stage where, where we can issue the bonds and take advantage of, of the rates while they're still low, right?
Yeah, would, you know, you probably, you know, it's the time to, it is the time to issue debt. And rates, you know, eventually will start to creep up. I mean, if you look at the forecast, again, as I said before, you know, a lot of what we do in this forecasting is impacted by national events, you know, world events, and even what your, your policymakers, what you do. So what you decide to do, so. You know, a lot of forecasts now that inflation will start to creep in, rates might start to creep up. Although the Fed says they're still going to keep rates low, which, you know, helps us, so. It is a good time to issue debt right now.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next question, I'm looking for hands up, otherwise I'm going to go right down the line if I don't see hands up. Okay, Peter.
Joe, just a quick question, maybe you know this. How many, do you know how many houses we have or households that are assessed at this $227,000 value in town? Do we, do we have hard numbers on how the breakup, the assessments are in town?
Peter, I did, when we did the last revale, I did, I don't have it in front of me. But the last time I did the revale in 2017, we actually did a breakdown as to how many houses were, we did them in broad ranges, you know, this, this, this amount to this amount.
Yeah.
And 227 came out to be the, you know, it came out to be the, we didn't, we didn't do it as like a mean, we did it more like in ranges and the the largest number of houses were, were in this range. So. And, you know, what throws this sometimes too is because it probably sounds low to some people, again, just to remind you, it's 70% of market value.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But also you have to remember that there are, you know, when you talk about residential, you're also talking condos. You're also talking, you know, you're talking about some, some buildings that may not be as, you know, they're going to be small, that are lumped in there that drive the number down a little bit.
Yeah, okay, good point. I didn't think of that, the condo part of it or other types of residents. Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Peter. Next question. Seeing any hands up there. There you go, Brian.
Brian, yeah.
Brian, we lost you, Brian. We can't hear you, you're back on mute.
I think my paper just put me out. So anyway, just wanted to say thank you for this, Joe, and you're bringing back a lot of fine memories from last year. The question I had, and I think I brought up last year, was the impact that the town will feel from the 20-year debt service? Is it possible to push it out longer? I know that the town pays more over a longer time, but the impact on taxes is less. Have we, is that something that we might still want to consider? To keep the impact on debt lower, although it will be longer over time. And I think affect more people at the end when their kids will be in school. Is that something that we can discuss or consider?
Yes, when, when it comes time to issue debt, and we look at, as I mentioned before, when it comes time to issue debt, we're going to, you know, we'll look at a lot of different variables and a lot of different factors. You know, what the cash flow needs are, what, what point of the year are we in, you know, what's the, what's the financial condition of the town at that point? What's the economic condition, you know, overall, the national economic condition, the local economy, the state economy? We have to look at all of that, you know, and then we decide how to structure the debt, whether we want to go longer or shorter. You know, what, how much we want to issue, whether we want to do a principal skip, what, you know, whatever we can do to take advantage of keeping the, you know, to smooth out the debt, to smooth out the tax impact on people, even the revale, you know, look at, you look at, we're going to issue $40 million or $45 million at the same time we're going into a revale, you know, we might look at some way to, you know, offset that. Looking at the possibility of, you know, looking, you know, maybe issuing more before or waiting and issuing later on, so. We, we look at that at the time that we decide, you know, we build up to the debt, the actual debt issuance. You know, issuing debt is a long process. When we target a date for a debt issuance, then we work backwards like three to four months, and we start at that point and start working forward as to how we're going to do, what we're going to do. And so it's, it's a real, it's a, it's a real process that we go through and we factor all that in. One of the concerns is, is we also want to measure cost benefit, you know, you could say, well, let's do 25 years, but that may add, you know, X number of dollars in additional interest over the life of the project where we're only going to save like two or three bucks on the tax rate. So you might pay taxes longer on that project or higher taxes in the long run on that project because you're going to pay more in interest. Whereas, you know, and the benefit was only to save two or three bucks in any given fiscal year. So we actually look at that when we issued that with the impact. That's why a lot of our debt recently has been 15 years is because we were able to, you know, pay it off quickly, get a more favorable interest rate. And, and actually being able to put us in a position to, to issue that, level out our debt and issue that.
Excellent. Oh, thank you for that. I'm glad we're being flexible and fluid there.
And next up, Joe and Peter, could you put your hands down? Joe, you're up next.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you very much for the numbers. To me, they look really good, so I just want to confirm with you. So we're not going to see, so if it goes to referendum passes, our residents won't see any impact until 2223. And basically, we hit the peak, you said at 2728, and then it starts to go down, correct?
The debt service peaks around 2728, and then it starts to go down, right?
Okay, so we're basically looking at four to six years of climbing numbers and it starts to decrease for every resident, and we can figure our budgets out as we go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Gary, any questions?
No, no, not at this time, but that, Joe, thank you very much. The spreadsheets were very informative. Thank you.
Good. Chris?
No questions. I think Ed and Brian and Joe kind of hit everything I was thinking about. I, I, I will take the opportunity just to, you know, maybe pile on with Joe and Kathy and and based on my tenure on the Board of Education that, you know, to make sure the community knows that, you know, the, nothing is being sacrificed in terms of the other projects at the other schools with the Friar report. And this is all baked into these projections, so the community knows both from just the parents who are concerned about the projects at the other schools that that's not being sacrificed and that yet, you know, people who are concerned, you know, last time around about these other projects that may be going on, they already in here. So I just want to make sure, I'll pile on and make sure that message gets out. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Chris. Okay, Joe, I do have a couple of questions on top of these. You had mentioned the capital improvements, we're assuming them being 3%. What is your assumption for the increase in the Board of Ed and the town side?
3%.
Okay, so 3% each year is how we see the numbers as we see them right here. Okay, very good, thank you. And the, the actual overall impact to that average homeowner, if my math is right, the increase due to the high school project is a total increase to the average homeowner over the life of this project each year, $465.16, is that correct?
You got it.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, and could you just repeat, you said it before, I didn't catch it quickly, the bond issues, there were going to be four bond issues, and what were those amounts?
Right now, we, again, based on this forecast, there would be four bond issues. Each one would be in January, starting in 2022. First one would be 20 million, second one would be 45 million. Third one would be 25 million, and the fourth one would be 20 million.
Great. Okay, and just doing a quick check through here, if I had any other questions. No, I think, I think that covers, I appreciate that. Any other final questions for Joe? Great, okay, thank you very much, Joe, appreciate that. Our next item will be D3, discussion of next steps for the FHS building project. I will turn it over to Megan Guerrero, the committee chair.
Thank you CJ. Kathy Blonsky, did you have any other information you wanted to provide now, or am I ready to start the follow-up conversation?
No, Meg, I'm going to have it at the end. I think you can maybe start, and then I'll chime in at the end. Thank you.
Perfect, all right, no problem at all. So again, thank you for having us back tonight. We've already received a lot of really valuable information, I think, for all of us, which is great. But just a follow-up from our last conversation, so as you're aware, the building committee presented the schematic design and the project cost estimates at our last meeting on January 26 with you. This sunset presentation, we have worked closely with our professional partners to provide you with additional information and input on the questions that you had last time. In, and we thought the best way to do that was actually do a written response, and so you all did receive a memo that was delivered to you that actually outlined each one of those questions and had a detailed response associated. So I'm going to hold on those questions for right now. We are certainly here as a team to walk through those with you if you have additional questions or require additional detail around them. But one of the other things we talked about last time, I think that was really important for us to come back to you with, was a little bit more detailed information around the, what we called the project exclusions. And there was really three that we focused on last time. The first was the 1928 building. The second was energy efficiency improvements and then Route 4 improvements. So just as a quick summary before we kind of move on for additional conversation and open it up for any questions or comments. The 1928 building, the information we provided you was certainly more detailed, it provided more information. It just talked about, again, just in summary, just a reminder that the project budget that we presented last week did include the demolition of the 1928 building as part of the scope of our project work. But we discussed the two exclusions, which included the first scenario, which was a minimal renovation or a mothball option. And, you know, the, really, the purpose of that was to provide prevent actually further deterioration of the building moving forward, and then see if there's a future use from there. So that really included a lot of work that actually needs to happen in order to make that mothballing complete. But once we subtracted the cost of building demolition that is already included in the project budget, the total adjusted cost to the town for mothballing the 1928 building is $1,42,300, as we discussed last time. Again, you have more detail in the memo in front of you. The second scenario is really represented here as a complete renovation of the 1928 building. Again, we do have detail that, that really shows you what's included inside that renovation, but if we subtract the cost of the building demolition again, that is already included in the project budget, the total adjusted cost to the town for complete renovation of the 1928 building is $9,821,683. The point on those two that we need to also mention, which I think is important, is neither one of those exclusions are eligible for state reimbursement. And that is an important point, and that is because it's, it's not part of our school project initiative as we explained last time, it is really an exclusion. And that's why we came to you to say, here's, here's things that we need some further direction on and to figure out next steps. Moving on from there, the additional energy savings initiatives, and this is the Net Zero Physical Plant, so just, again, there's more detail provided, hopefully, that, that gave you a little bit more clarification on that. But the important point here is for, I think, everybody to understand, these are additional energy initiatives and savings. And to, to everybody remember that the, the building design that we presented is is what's required to meet the mandatory Connecticut High Performance Building Standards, which is equivalent to LEED Silver. So this is a very efficient building we presented. And these exclusions, as you have listed here, are really above and beyond of what, what is required to really meet that LEED Silver standard. The other part to this was the Route 4 improvements. So again, we did some bullet points for you as well to detail a little bit more about the Route 4 improvements, which include at a very high level, some of, some curb radius changes on Monty, roadway widening, upgrading to the traffic lights, new pavement marking, utility pool relocation, so actual, that would need to happen on Route 4. So hopefully, that was enough detail at this point for you to kind of have, have a complete conversation, really understand what these, what's, what these inclusions are, exclusions are, and, and how they should be handled moving forward.
Okay, great. Do we have any, anything to add from anyone else from the building committee? Or are you doing the whole thing, Meg?
Only if, I think, if questions at this point, based on the, the level of detail that you have in the written responses. If there's anything specific we need to provide clarification on.
Okay, let's start with questions, then we can circle back then. Perfect. Council members, any questions, please raise your hand. I don't see any, but I'm sure we have some. Joe, go ahead.
Thank you CJ, thank you Meg very much for all your information. Quick question, 900 Wing. Obviously, we're looking at to make in that central office, what if we just kept it as classrooms and updated the locker rooms to meet code? Would there be any benefit as far as keep those extra classrooms for students, breakout areas, stuff like that?
I mean, I think we've met the requirements as far as total space required, based on the requirements that were given to us. So I think the, the new, new building space meets those requirements. So what we did is look at the additional statement of needs, which also included that space for the, the town office and the Title IX requirements, and said, how do we best use a facility such as the 900 Wing that we know still had some value in it? And how best do we use that moving forward? And that, that was the best solution that I think the architects came forward with for us and made the most sense as far as the overall design.
Thanks, Meg.
Great. Peter?
Hi, Meg. Back to the 900 Wing, what's, what's the dollar amount associated with that project or that part of the project? You guys have that number?
We do have it. I don't want to, I want to make sure I get that accurate. So Richard, do you have that to provide?
Yes, the construction cost of the renovation of the 900 Wing is approximately $5.1 million. That includes the complete renovation of the locker room areas in order to meet the Title IX requirements. It also includes the interior renovation of the remaining portion of the 900 Wing, which currently has classrooms. So we would need to repartition that space in, in order to create office areas. Also, I want to point out that the building is approaching a 20-year life, so certain things are going to start to fail. And so we have built into that renovation cost roof replacement, for example. Construction of the south wall, which is where abuts the existing buildings that are going to be removed. So there is some reconstruction that's going to be required, but the total is 5.1 million for construction.
Maybe just one follow-up. I just thought of this. In the new building itself, will there be locker rooms, obviously, can, I'm just thinking outside the box here. Can those locker rooms be utilized for the same purpose of this, or what would differentiate between the two? If they're?
Sure, I, I can take that question too, if I may. The locker rooms within the new building footprint are for PE, physical education, as well as any kind of athletic activities that require the gymnasium, such as basketball or wrestling. The locker rooms that are in the 900 Wing would be functioning as field lockers. In other words, those lockers would be for the baseball practice in the fields, track, football. practice in the fields, track, football, tennis, those kinds of activities, and as well as visiting teams.
So then those, in the 900 Ring, that, those lockers would be primarily for those field sports all the time?
That's correct.
Could there be any cross-use, just thinking outside the box here?
It's possible, sure, that's a matter of scheduling, but sure, that's possible.
Okay, thanks.
Good, Peter, Brian.
Thank you, just a question for clarification on the, on the building. On the 1928 building. The demolition of that building in its entirety is included in the cost for this building, and it is covered for reimbursement, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and it's just if we're gonna mothball it or renovate it, that it is additional cost above that, and those are things that are not included in reimbursement?
That's correct.
Just for clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, any other hands up? I can't believe we don't have any other questions here, okay, Peter, Peter, is your hand back up or is your hand not down yet?
I just put it up CJ, but you know what, just going back to Tim Kelly's questions, what was this, what would be the total square foot of the building, and how many classrooms will there be?
Again, I could answer those questions, the total square footage of the new high school is 239,250 square feet. Plus, we have the 900 Wing, which has 19,700 square feet. The total number of classrooms in the new building, general, general purpose classrooms is 45 classrooms. Plus, we have 12 science labs. Plus, we have technology labs such as automotive and robotics. Plus, we have five or six art rooms, plus special ed rooms, music suite, etc.
Okay, Gary.
A question from Richard. The mechanicals to run the 900 building, are they giving you runoff of the new building or standalone?
No, the mechanicals would be standalone. So right now, we have service that's brought into several points in the footprint of the building in order to make that 900, I'm sorry, the 1928 building standalone, that's what you're asking about, it's a 1928 building.
No, it's a 900 building.
Oh, I beg your pardon, the 900 Wing, the 900 Wing actually would have new mechanical equipment, it would have its own physical plant to serve that building.
Okay, thank you.
Joe.
Thank you, Richard or Meg, the partitions that we talked about last time for the gymnasium, that would be one set that would divide it, would that be multiple sets of mechanical partitions in order to break it down to smaller gymnasiums, then to open it up to a field house?
So we have a wall that separates the auxiliary gym from the main gym. Within the main gym, we have a divider that subdivides the main gym into two smaller gyms. Now, that partition that exists between the auxiliary gym and the main gym is a permanent wall, it's acoustically separating both those spaces. So we have as an alternate, and I believe it's about $95,000, to change that to a motorized partition. The motorized partition then would allow that wall to be opened up, opening the auxiliary gym and combining with the main gym, making it field house size. That's, that's what the $95,000 is, is for a motorized wall separating the auxiliary from the main gym.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Joe, Peter, do you have another question?
No, Joe just, Joe just asked it, by the way, and I had my hand up, thanks.
Okay, Brian, before I go on to you, Brian, Ed or Chris, you haven't gotten a chance first round. Anything you want to jump in on, or are you just holding off?
No, I'm all set, I think, given my involvement with this project over the last number of years, I'm fine CJ.
Great, okay.
And, yeah, I'm also set, all set too, no further questions, thanks, Meg and Richard for your, for your updates, very much appreciated.
Great, okay, Brian, over to you.
Sure, just a clarification on the walls in the gym. Currently, we, it said in your note that there were curtains already that would separate those rooms. Could you just expand on that, so I know where the, where the rooms are, is it the same that you just described?
So we do have a divider that separates the main gymnasium from, into two spaces. That's built in, that's already baked into the number. We also have a permanent wall that separates that main gym from the auxiliary gym, that's also baked into the number. If you wanted to make that permanent wall movable, there would be an additional cost associated with that because of the structure that we would need to put in to hang a movable wall as well as motorize it, so that's, that's the difference.
Thank you, that clarifies it, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple of questions on top of this. You know, we've been talking about the 1928 building and will, I think we have more obviously questions to deal with that. But the, the full ticket is a 9.8, I think it was, million dollar. The 900 Wings a 5.1 million. Is there any scenario, and you may, I'm sure you all in the building committee went over this, but you could just enlighten the public, because I've had the question asked, would there be any advantage to keeping the 1928 building instead of the 900 Wing? And there could be, could there be any economies of scale by doing that?
Richard, I think probably you're better suited to answer that.
Sure, so one of the nice things about the 900 Wing is that it is placed ideally so that it can serve as a field house for lockers. It's also meets the square footage requirements of the central offices as defined in the educational specifications, so it just happens to match quite nicely. The 1928 building is much larger than we would need for the lockers and the central offices, so we would have excess square footage. It's a three-story building. Unlike the 900 Wing, we'd have to put in elevator to serve or upgrade the elevators right now, that's really not an accessible elevator in order to serve all three floors in the 1928 building, unlike the 900 Wing, which is a one-story, simple structure. So it, you would end up with excess square footage, quite frankly, in the 1928 building.
Okay.
And, and consequently, it works against you because we're trying to satisfy the state in terms of square footage. And so if you save the building, all of that excess square footage would not be eligible for reimbursement.
In, as far as eligibility in that 900 Wing, since you have the locker rooms in there along with the offices, are the offices then eligible, or is it only the portion of the building that is locker rooms?
Both the locker rooms and the board of ed offices or central offices, they're not, shouldn't be referred to as board of ed offices, they're central offices of Farmington Public Schools would be eligible, in fact, this has been an ongoing discussion with Costas Diamantis, he's the director of OSC GNR, the Office of School Construction Grants, and he has been very supportive of making those square footages eligible.
Okay, great, so that would also be a negative to, and this is an idea someone had brought up to me, putting the central offices in the 1928 and just adding locker room space onto the new building. That would mean none of the central offices would be eligible, is that correct?
The central office portion would be eligible.
I'm saying if the central office went into the 1928 building, and instead of the 900 existing at all, the locker rooms went in a separate building, would the central offices be eligible if they were in the 1928 building, I think was my question.
Yes, I understand the question. That portion that would be dedicated to the central offices would be eligible, but I believe that's only about 12,000 or 13,000 square feet roughly, and so, and so it would only fill a third of the 1928 building.
Gotcha. Thank you, Brian's hand is up.
Thank you, just a quick question, and maybe this is for, for Joe, but is the town still paying debt on the 900 Wing addition? Or has that debt been paid off? I thought I'd heard at one point that we were, that we still owed debt on that building, that's why we were keeping it.
This is Joe Swetskis, Director of Finance. We think we have two years left on some of that debt.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's about it.
Was that the only reason that we were thinking of holding on to that building, because we're still paying debt on the building?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I remember having that conversation, I just didn't know where that stood.
I think, this is Meg, I think that, that certainly was part of the conversations, Brian, but I also think, again, the location of it, the vicinity, the appropriate square footage. It just was a really nice fit for making sure we addressed those Title IX issues with those locker rooms in the exact location they need to be. And addressing not only a requirement that came to the building committee around those central offices, but also looking at that as a more holistic approach to an issue I think we can all attest to is some of the space restrictions in Town Hall today. And how do we address those, is there a way, so really, although, you know, we're really looking at, we think, and I think the district has been vocal in saying that moving those office spaces to that location and keeping them closer to the FHS facility is definitely beneficial for them. I think it's also looking at it more holistically too, is, is there a way we can really make this worthwhile for the community in the town and make some smart decisions as we go along?
That seems like a good, a good pathway, I mean, for something that we're still investing in, and we're still going to get some good use out of, even though we have to put a little more into it.
And I'll go with Megan on this one to follow up on that. Since the 900 Wing will actually be paid off before we start paying any debt on this new building, was it considered to put the Board of Education offices in a new structure with the lockers in that building, was that ever a consideration? And again, would that be any economies of scale?
Can I take that question, Meg? Okay, so we looked initially at increasing the size of the new building to accommodate the lockers as well as the central offices, but it ends up costing you more money because new construction does cost more than renovation. And rough, the renovation is roughly two-thirds the cost, I'm talking about complete renovation, is roughly two-thirds the cost of new building. And remember, the building is, is almost new, I mean, it will have been 20 years by the time we get to it and start doing renovation, but it's quite serviceable. It's what I would consider a modern building with proper insulation, there's no need to replace the windows, for example, that structure is perfectly fine. So it's less, less costly to you to keep the 900 Wing incorporated into the, into the new building.
Okay, thank you, Joe, you had a question?
Yes, one more, sorry about this, Richard, so if we kept the 900 Wing as classrooms and just updated the locker rooms, would that still be eligible for reimbursement? Or do we fall out of the parameters, because we have granted extra square footage for classrooms?
So right now, the existing building is 239,000 square feet, I believe your cap for the state is approximately 253, so you could accommodate some additional square footage in the new building. You, in other words, you could capture the 900 Wing and fold it into the square footage without exceeding the square footage guideline, I believe that's what your question is, does it, does it tip us over the top?
Yeah, that's what I'm at, or yeah, so if we just kept it as classrooms, you know, did the rooftop stuff, renovated the locker rooms, we're still eligible through the state guidelines, we're not exceeding or anything else, we could just basically go that route if that was feasible through the town?
Let me do some quick arithmetic, I'm gonna use my pencil.
I like it.
Old school.
Right, old school. You would be over the state guideline by approximately 5,900 square feet.
5,900, okay, thank you.
Pretty, pretty close.
Not, not bad, thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Let me, I, okay, Kathy Blonsky, did you have a question?
Another question, would you like me to do some of the wrap-up on this?
Is there anything Megan wants to?
I, I think if you'd let me maybe just do a little bit of wrap-up and Meg can chime in, just what we're looking for is per our discussion right now, is that there's got, we're looking for consensus that the council understands that the additional exclusions are not part of the, the project. And the other thing that we wanted to discuss is the referendum timeframe, so those are the two things that I think are that we have to have an understanding of, because the next agenda item is the 1928 building. So again, that there's consensus that the council understands that the additional exclusions are not part of the project, and that we need to talk about the referendum timeframe, which I could do now, that, so that's where we are.
Okay, that, that sounds reasonable, sorry, I got distracted, I was trying to see if my battery was dying. Okay, so good, so timeframe right now?
Yeah, if you wanted, so for the timeframe included in your packet was the referendum timeframe that we suggested. We had, I think we had two proposed referendum dates, but I think one of them is one that we are recommending, and Kat, maybe if you can get on the line and you can tell us what that date is and backing it out and why we chose that date.
Absolutely, so in the agenda packet, like Kathy said, is a calendar, a proposed calendar. We recommend June 3rd as a referendum date. And per chapter 50, or I'm sorry, per our charter, we have to have a town meeting 10 days before, so that would bring you to May 24th for a town meeting for the referendum on June 3rd. We did propose a second, what we're calling Option 2 for June 17th, which would bring the town meeting per the charter to June 7th, but that is a little bit later in the school year, I'm not sure exactly when graduation is, but typically, we like to, we like to have the residents on a school project have school still in session, so people can vote on this, so that is what we were proposing, and then backing that out again would have the town meeting 10 days before.
And the reason why we are not doing it on June 10th is because if you do 10 days back, that's Memorial Day weekend. So the two days are the June 3rd and the June 17th, and our recommendation, I think, would be the June 3rd because of the, the fact that people will still be around in school. If it's near graduation week and things of that nature, it's usually, my understanding is it's very chaotic and things of that nature, so we thought potentially we'd have it a couple of weeks before that, where people were still around, it wasn't as chaotic. We can't have it on the 10th because we'd have to have the town meeting on Memorial Day, and that doesn't work. And we can't really have it much earlier than this because it's not going to be ready to go. And so that's the other reason that we're picking the, the beginning of June. So again, this isn't, we're not setting the date, so I'm, everyone's clear on that, but we're looking just so the building committee could start aiming for the potential referendum date being as if the council has consensus would be the June 3rd date, or the, you know, first week of June, but we're not setting the date or doing anything that, like that, that will be later on, but we just, it's helpful for them to have you know, a potential date that they're working towards.
Okay, could I just ask if we had any delays, anything that stalled this timeframe, what would happen if we basically missed the, the 7th and the 17th timeframe?
Kathy, you want me to, to jump in on that schedule?
Yeah.
So the state grant application is June 30th, and you can do it one of two ways, one would be to have the referendum prior to June 30th for your state grant submission, or it would be to have it after the state grant submission, we would just have to claim in our submission when our referendum would be taking place. And there is a deadline- And there is a deadline. Um, I believe it's in November of when we would have to hold a referendum.
Okay. Got you. All right. Are there any questions from the council on the, the timeframe we're talking about here? Chris, Fagan?
Yep, uh, maybe, uh, Richard, Mark or Chris. Is there any benefit that, you know, to talking with just what Kat said is having the referendum prior to submission or after? Is there any tangential benefits or disadvantages on that referendum day pending, you know, working around the application date?
Uh, this is Craig Cikley. I can, from CSG, I can take part of this. Sure. If we were to have the referendum prior to, uh, with it passing, it allows design to begin a few months earlier than having a November referendum and then having the, the design commence later in the year. If that's something that, that the town wishes to pursue. So there is that benefit as well as, uh, right now, the reimbursement rate, we know what it is. The next fiscal year's reimbursement rate has not been published yet and probably will not be for another month or so. So we don't know, uh, what the, if there's a, uh, financial implication by delaying into a, into a new, into a new fiscal year for a referendum.
Okay, thank you. Chris, and you said you know what the, uh, rate is reimbursement rate. What is that at this point in time?
Currently for the, so we have two as part of the negotiations with Casa de Amantes and the Office of School Construction. Being that we are submitting two grant applications, one being the new building construction. That reimbursement rate is eighteen point nine three percent currently. And the renovation to the nine hundred wing, including, as was mentioned earlier, the Board of Ed spaces is twenty-eight point nine three percent.
Thank you. Uh, other questions from the council? Brian?
Uh, really just a question for, for Ira. And I'm wondering, does, uh, doing it on, I think the earlier the better I, I would, I'm anxious to get this project started. But I'm curious to know what the impact is on effectively communicating with the community on the impact and the benefits and the issues that we need to address prior to the referendum. Does that give us enough time?
From my experience, yes. If we delay it, you know, fall times like starting all over after Labor Day. Because the summer it's impossible. And that only gives a couple of months for starting all over again. And since the ball seems to be rolling, I know you've got to make the decision. There's, I think four months is plenty of time to get information out to do what we have to do. Uh, I think it's perfect timing. I did a project in Southfield. They did it. They did it in two months. So I've seen it two months. I've seen it two years. And the two years, what happens the end of two years, I went through here in Glastonbury, the cost of the renovation of high school went up five million dollars.
Ira, just so you know, I just saw Kathy greeter wince when you said two years.
So I'm, I'm believe, I think your timing, the parents are still around. They're paying attention to school. And doing the, I mean, I've seen it, this one I tend to see in, in springtime, anywhere from April to June. Or what you're going to do then is you can't go beyond Thanksgiving. And if you do it that time, I find two months takes a little time. The kids are back in school. Who knows what it's going to be in the fall time? And I think you got kind of what I could call a general, uh, the way look in our business, general goodwill going on right now. People want to move forward and think about future things. Being housebound and living day to day, they want to see something positive. So I think it'll kind of all lines up. That's, that's just my, uh, feel. It's a very different time, but I think you have one enough time to, in a sense, make the case.
Great, thank you. Chris, did you have another question? Chris Fagan, I see your hand up. Was that another question or is it just?
No, I'll take it down. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll lower it. Yep.
No problem. Uh, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I guess we're looking for Kathy consensus then on a date we're shooting for?
I, I think that's just that maybe consensus that everyone understands and giving direction to the building committee that the additional exclusions that were mentioned are not part of the project, that everyone's comfortable with that. And that was looking for an, uh, the first week of June for a timeframe for a referendum date.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about that? I think you have consensus now. Now, can I actually, why don't I ask for consensus? Do I have consensus from the council?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, any nays? Okay, you have consensus.
And Meg is, does, does that, does that give you guys direction?
Yes, that's what, what, exactly what we need is just timeframe. Again, we will, there's some additional steps that are going to need to happen when we actually set a date and, um, you know, wording and language and things like that. But yeah, for us, for planning purposes, that is, that is exactly what we need. Thank you.
Perfect.
Meg, I'm just happy to hear someone say that's exactly what you, I haven't heard that in a long time.
I'm happy to provide that feedback.
Okay, that closes item D three. I think we're moving on to new business, E one. Peter?
Agenda item E one, I make a motion to establish a town council ad hoc committee to review the options for the future use of the nineteen twenty-eight building to add as a separate referendum question.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
Okay, we have an, I, uh, motion and second. Kathy, do you have anything to add to that? You're on mute.
Sorry. Um, as you can see on the action item on the screen, it just says, it's if the recommended that the nineteen twenty building committee should include the proposed uses and estimated cost and then that this ad hoc committee would report back to the town council with their recommendations. Um, I don't know if you want to talk now, CJ and Edward, there was some questions about, um, the makeup of this committee. And so CJ, I'll turn it over to you and you can take it and I'll, I can answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. The, uh, the original, uh, recommendation was for the ad hoc committee who consist of two town council members. Kathy Blonsky, town manager and Kat, assistant town manager. Ed had some, uh, concerns that he felt we should have town residents and potentially the board of ed. So Ed, do you want to explain what your thoughts are?
Uh, yeah, thank you CJ. Um, yeah, um, yeah, so, um, you know, first of all, I agree with the charge. My, you know, my issue is more with just making sure we have the right structure of, for this committee. So, you know, I think something of this historic importance should have a committee that's definitely transparent and inclusive. And I think we should have a couple of residents, a board of ed member and maybe even someone from the Farmington Historical Society, since this is a historical building. Um, I think if there would be value in getting the full range of views on this important issue. And certainly nothing against any of the people that, you know, are being proposed to be on this committee. It's more that I just feel that this committee should just be a little bit more inclusive of the public. And I think that would benefit this committee and benefit the process.
Okay, and as far as trying to put together a committee like that, do you have people in mind other than the Historic Society who you'd like on this commission?
Uh, I don't have a specific person in mind right now, but I think we could, we could certainly add the, um, add that slot to, um, that position to this committee and then appoint someone at a follow-up meeting. And, and we've done that before for another committee, I believe.
Okay, and Kathy, how do you see that affecting our timeframe on all this?
Again, I think depending on how fast you do it, I guess the one thing that I would just want to get some clarity on is what the charge of the committee is. And absolutely, I have no problem of having community members on a group like this. But is the charge for the uses? And so the historic district is going to talk about the uses of the building? Or are they talking about what the building is going to be renovated as? Or is the, you know, is the community talking about what the, what the, you know, the uses of the town operations are? Are they going to have input on that? Like what, or are they talking about whether or not we're having the nineteen twenty-eight and how it's going to be renovated? So I guess I'm unclear on what the community is going to be doing to participate on the municipal uses of the building.
Sure. I mean, in my, in my view, they could weigh on potentially, potentially all of those things. It would all be part of the discussion. Everybody on the committee could, could weigh in on that. And I think some people might also have a strong feeling one way or another of whether it's, uh, whether it's mothballed or, or it's renovated, given its historic nature, that could be an issue. That is, um, you know, of more significant importance to, uh, to people that are concerned with the historic aspect of the building.
Okay, to be clear, Edward, I think this ad hoc, uh, if you read the charge is not, it is to figure out how the referendum item that these options that are going to the town to make those decisions. This is not, uh, for an ad hoc committee to decide what we will do with the building. It is to decide how this would go on a referendum to offer it, uh, to the public. So just to be clear. And I would ask Richard, um, in those nine point eight million dollars that we're talking to renovate, is that a historically proper renovation?
Yes, it would be. So, uh, the renovation would completely restore the exterior, rebuild the cupola, clean the exterior masonry, also rebuild the northern wall of the nineteen twenty-eight building because that northern wall is missing. Remember that it is, it butts up against the rest of the high school. So there's a fair amount of reconstruction that needs to be done. And then there's a budget for refurbishing the interior. From my perspective, I'm not a historian, but from my perspective, there's not a lot of historic value to the interior. It's been chopped up quite a bit, but it could be restored for office purposes, for example. But as far as the exterior restoration, yes, that's in the budget.
Great. So Kathy, do we need to?
Yeah, I'm sorry CJ?
Yeah, Brian, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, that's okay. I, I've been, I've been using the, the fake one. So I guess I'll just start with my real hand. I'm just going, thinking about, you know, the village ad hoc committee that we, that we were on. And, uh, I think it was, what was nice about is it was small and it was expedient and was able to move some things along that were already established by the village committee, but we don't have anything here really established other than what to do with the building. And I'm thinking it would be, it was nice for us to have people who were involved in the process up to that point because they could bring up points that they had learned that was part of the process. And there was a really good discussion as to how we move forward. And I'm thinking it would be helpful to have certainly a historic member there or maybe someone from the building committee just so we can get insight because I don't see anyone on this commission that had anything to do with the historical component of this or with the building committee. I mean, I'm not saying Kathy was not part of that, but just to get some insight into some of the questions that might come up before we get to the very end so that the community knows that we're considering things in the process and not just at the end. I just, it seemed to work well for us. It might work well here.
Uh, CJ?
Yeah, Kathy.
Yeah, Brian, I don't, I don't disagree with what you or have, what Edward has said. The one thing though, that I think is a little bit different, and I think that there's some different parts of this and that to me, a part of this is the operations of the town and about social services and recreation that would be, you know, that I would be educating, uh, have to educate people on that end, which is really just the operations of what falls under what I do. And then there's the thing about some of the historic areas and things like that. So and, and also these ad hoc committees, I do think they move things along to, um, because we don't have a lot of time. And, you know, maybe some kind of solution is when you bring some people in to talk about it, you know, to like have guest people come in and to go through it. But, you know, is, again, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the charge with the group that, again, are we talking about, am I giving recommendations of how I see the operations on the, of use for the municipal building? And then there's, is there other parts of the charge that say how the historic end is going to look and how we're going to do it? And I mean, that's fine. I just worry about the timeframe on all this and getting the input and having the discussion and just again, the use of the building, you know, me giving recommendations to the council, which is kind of your purview on this.
And Kathy, when would this, uh, ad hoc committee need to have, uh, some type of, uh, decision? To actually get it. Let's assume back to that early June.
And if you can put the, the, the calendar back on again. So, you know, on April, May eleventh, if you go back one more, Anna. Approval and send to referendum. So by May eleventh, you're going to have to have a question established. You're going to have to have a use of the building and you're going to have to have a cost.
Okay.
Or uses.
Okay, so through May eleventh, first we get to get through the budget before we can do much of anything on this, I would assume. So anybody have any other thoughts on this before I, Chris, go ahead?
Yeah, I, I guess maybe I'm just confused and, and I don't disagree with anything, you know, Kathy's saying or Ed or Brian are saying, but I guess I'm trying to understand the charge of this ad hoc too, because I mean, are we going to be forward now in referendum to decide of the future uses of the building? Are we just saying as a, as a town council that we want this nineteen twenty-eight building decision decided as an additional question at referendum? I mean, I, I can't imagine a scenario whereby we establish an ad hoc committee that works with Kathy and, you know, decides to renovate it. If we renovate, we're going to do all these great things. I think the first and foremost, we're just putting this in the town and the community's hands saying, what, give us guidance, what you want to do. Right? I mean, that's, or are we trying to solve the problem before we even go to referendum? I mean, I'm just trying to understand the charge and what we're trying to accomplish in the next couple of months with the nineteen twenty-eight building, which I think, you know, pulling together everything Ed and Brian and Kathy are saying, I think are all the right things, but what are we trying to accomplish? We want to make the community give us direction and then we decide how we're going to use it. But this is, sounds like a financial question first and foremost. Community, do you want to spend a million, two to mothball this thing? Or do you want to spend nine million to renovate it? And then we decide what to do with it. I guess, I just don't want to get too granular in this ad hoc in the next couple of months. I mean, it just seems we're, we're, we're talking about two different things maybe for me and maybe I'm missing something.
No, I mean, uh, Chris, I think that's a really good point because this is, that needs clarity because in, when I was thinking about it and putting it together, I feel my kind of rationale was is that the committee's going, the community's going to want to know what the use of the building is going to be used for before they, um, spend the money on. Now, what you've said is that it's, it costs this much to just renovate the bare bones, but what are you going to do with the building? So to me, I thought that there was going to be some sort of recommendation about what the uses of this building would be. That, I mean, and again, I may be way off base. This is what the, for the council. But I don't know if you're going to be able to put a question out, whether you're going to mothball it or say you're going to renovate it for ten million dollars. But what the question that would come out is what are you going to use it for? I, I don't know.
Okay, that's a good question. Ed, uh, maybe you can respond to that, Brian. I'll get you in a second. What is your vision? What are the, uh, members of the public, uh, the Historic Society? And, uh, I forget what the other was, uh, and the Board of Education going to add to the answer of what we're going to do with this building. How do you foresee that?
Um, I think they'll just be part of the conversation as, as residents of this town. Um, and it sounds like there's two things on this, on this, um, charge here. It's the use and if it's going to be renovated. And I think a lot of people, uh, potential, you know, the, you know, residents or, uh, member of the Board of Ed or, um, someone from the Historical Society, uh, would have, you know, views on that or will want to weigh in on that. So that's where I see the value in, in, in having those people on this committee.
Okay, here's, here's, I'm just, uh, I'm not following, I guess. I understand everyone will have views on it and clearly when it goes to referendum, everyone have a vote on it. But, um, are you saying you think, uh, the Board of Education, the Historic Society and the, uh, public should be telling us what should be in this building? I mean, I think, uh, we're listening, or at least I heard, I thought Kathy say, uh, the different, uh, town offices and uses are kind of what would be practical for us. Are you asking for the, uh, the members of the public and the Historic Society, uh, and the Board of Education to, uh, tell Kathy what we should be doing with the building?
I think Kathy would, would provide some education to them on, you know, what, where the current deficiencies are in, 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 in town departments and what the potential uses are. And the committee as a whole would have that conversation. uses are. And the committee as a whole would have that conversation. And, and like I said, it does say if it is recommended that the 1928 building be renovated. So it sounds like that's also part of the charge, is them determining or recommending, right, the ultimately coming back to the town council and recommending that if it should be renovated. So that's, that's just my view.
Okay, Brian, you have some?
Hey, I was kind of going to say the same thing, because we're talking about the building use. The question I have, just as a, as a citizen, is what is the historical value of holding on to the building? Granted, Kathy, there's probably a lot of uses we could use that have to, have to be discussed. But my question is, is should we hold on to the building in the first place? And are we asking the public to vote in referendum on something that hasn't really been fleshed out publicly in terms of what's the value of having it? And do we want to spend, you know, approximately nine to $10 million on renovating it? Or just mothballing it? So?
CJ, can I just chime in on that? Because that's another very good point that I made assumptions here. And is that when I put if the recommended that the 1928 building be renovated, I was meaning versus being mothballed. So I'm making an assumption for purposes of discussion tonight, that the council is comfortable that that's going to a referendum question. Now, and the public is going to decide that, which is different from what Brian, you just said. Now, if I absolutely 100% agree that if you're going to have a debate about whether or not we should even put it as a referendum question and keep that building, then that absolutely, to me, is a community based discussion. So there's, again, I made assumptions for the sake of discussion here, but if the council's not on the same page about that, then, you know, we should be starting over with this motion.
Thoughts from anyone?
CJ.
Yeah, Peter.
Just so I'm clear, we're going to, on the, on the potential June 3 referendum date for the high school, we would also have the question for the renovation of the 1928?
That's what we had always spoken about. We had always spoken about on the same referendum, having that question of do we renovate it or mothball it? Or is it just demoed? Yes.
All right. I'll just throw it out there, even though I, you know, would just be kind of throwing money at it, a lot of money. Do we tap the brakes here and not put it on that referendum date? How would that, let's just say we just mothballed it and then took time to really think it out and plan it out. Just throwing that out there.
Okay. And first off, I'll, I'll ask, maybe Meg or Richard can answer better, but we wouldn't have to do any mothballing right away because construction, new school wouldn't start for a while. So I suppose the question would be, how long could we wait to make this decision? And is this something we need to make tonight? Because we've got so many questions coming up.
So I'll take that question. This is Richard. You could wait until the summer of 2024. And that's when the building has to, you have to dispose of it, mothball it, or restore it. Because around it, it's going to be demolished.
Got you. Chris, you had a question?
Well, I was just gonna say, because, you know, I'll defer to Kathy a little bit, but I almost feel like we're going to get almost too complicated for a referendum question too, right? I mean, it's, it's almost getting too complicated, you know, getting what Peter was just saying. I just almost think, you know, sitting, what we're looking at tonight, it's, it's, it's just too complicated to, you know, have a sort of a multi-stage referendum question or something, you know, maybe with some greater clarity or so. It just seems complicated. And I don't know if that complicates the, the initial or most important question of all, which is the project itself. But, you know, as Richard just said, if it's 2024, I mean, can we wait? Then, then, you know, then getting back to what Ed said, we have a more inclusive, you know, community based approach to it or something. So I don't know if it works better just by doing that.
Well, I think, you know, something, again, that could be, you know, talked about is, you know, going back to what Peter said, is that the build, it would be a question saying that the building would be mothballed at X dollar amount, and then there would be future, you know, committees, or it would be future discussion on the use of it. And again, that's something, a policy decision that how does everyone feel? Because I think you're right. It's like, it, it does, if, you know, probably need more discussion or it becomes very complicated and there's not a lot of time. So again, saying that we're going to mothball it, you have a couple of years. Again, I'm not the expert on these types of projects of getting them passed. You think, you know, because is that something that, you know, the group thinks that would, would sell? That, you know, if people really wanted the building, they'd come out and say, yes, mothball it, and then we'll figure out the use of it. Because we want to save, and the bigger thing is saving the building.
Kathy, just to be clear, though, with Richard's schedule, that wasn't mothballing because it's still being used until that summer when this, we don't have to mothball, we'd just be waiting. With all the questions we're bringing up now, I would recommend tabling this discussion. But before we do that, I would also ask Meg, and I think first I'll ask Ira, because there is clearly some passion behind this building for a number of members of our community. And I'd like to see if Ira has a feel for not deciding this on the same referendum. If we put off that decision, does, is that likely to help or hurt the referendum for the new school?
I'll just give you my experience with it has been multiple things on referendums. Here in Glastonbury, they mixed up three things. They did extension, $100 million extension of the high school, the senior citizen center, and lights in a football field. The lights in a football field killed the referendum first time. The minute you stack up referendums, then you're going to get different constituents who are going to say, I'll take that, but I don't want this, then both lose. So my sense is you've got apples and oranges here. And I take what Richard says better, that, you know, you can shelve this. And my suggestion is you get to referendum, if you do it in June, then bring this up a year later and saying, we're not quite sure, but this building's going to be used for the next three years anyway. So we can take some deliberate time with the historic commission, talking to people, having a nostalgia for it. And you got, you know, you go do another survey, you say, do we keep it? Do we not keep it? Anyone have some use? So if you have some community engagement, you got a guide, and therefore you, you get an idea what you want to do. Because everyone's going to have different opinions about what to do with an old building. Some people love it because they went there, or they know someone who went there, or, of course, they've all been going there recently, but go way back. And right now, I would just, it's apples and oranges here. I'd be, I, my, if you want my recommendation, I would just shelve it.
But Ira, when you say shelve it, does that mean there's no question at all? Just because I want to just make sure that everyone's?
Decision to be made, decision to be made. We're not, a decision to be made, you know, afterwards, because we're not quite sure what we want to do with the building, but we got three years to figure out and discuss with the community about what we want to do with it. I wouldn't mix it up. Are you talking about including this in a referendum?
It's just that the building is going to be, is scheduled to be demolished by our plans. So if we, if we don't put anything on it, is it just a communication that says we're going to be, we're not going to make the decision about the building for a few years?
Well, I'm just thinking, well, maybe I misunderstood that you're just haven't decided what to do. But if it's in the plans already to demolish it, you've got two things is that is, you know, the minute you bring a store commission into this, then it becomes a debate. Doesn't have values in a store building, as Richard said, just on the outside, because I'm sure the inside's been gutted 100 ways from Sunday in order to adapt, compare reuse. But if there's been an evaluation saying it's not worth saving, then you could make the case that it's not worth saving.
This is, this is Meg. I just want to make sure that I provide my perspective on this as well, as we've had conversations, as we receive comments, as that we're all aware that this 1928 building discussion is never easy. But I do have a concern, Ira, this is certainly something we can talk about. I think we need to dig a little deeper on it around a question that automatically includes reimburse, or automatically includes demolition, and not really having people understand that there's additional steps that would follow behind that. We, I think we have communication challenges as it is for people to really understand the complexity of this project, the needs, and what it means. So I'm not necessarily expressing an opinion one way or another. I'm just expressing that I do have a concern around it being an independent question without anything related to the 1928 building and the future of that building associated with it.
All I can say, Megan, is that it only came up one time in the survey, among over 1,100 surveys, only one person really brought it up.
Yeah, I think we can take that, certainly to put it in perspective. But I can also say, Ira, we've had it brought up at almost every meeting since we've, since we've had these conferences, since we've been starting to talk about the design. So again, I'm not, I just don't want to minimize the decision. And then I think we just need to be very thoughtful.
Oh, I agree with you. I may be always mixing apples and oranges here. I think, you know, it's like, you got the high school referendum, and I thought you were folding this into somehow to referendum discussion. I'm just recommending not to do that, but not necessarily a decision of the height of the 1928 building.
No, I think you're saying exactly the right thing. This is that. It is whether we, it's a separate question at the point of referendum.
Yeah.
Is, I think, what is up for debate here? So, and, and do we do it now? Or do we defer that question? And as I said, I don't necessarily have an opinion right at this moment, because I think I'm taking in people's feedback. But as I sit here right now, there is, I do have a concern around the independent building question being on the ballot with, you know, with everybody knowing that included, and that is the demolition of the 1928 building with no other context around it. And maybe it is, maybe we can provide that context. I don't know. But it's an additional challenge.
They always are, Meg.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know you know this.
Joe, you had a question?
Yes. So with the question about possibly moving, you know, central office maybe into the 1928 building, does that affect our application? Do we have the time to figure it out and still submit the application to the state and then change it before 2024 for that one part?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The, the application for state grants has to include dollar amount. So I think you need to decide which way you're going to go in order to determine the dollar amount as part of the application.
Correct.
Okay, so we would, we would have to know for sure by application date in June, X amount of dollars is going to be spent, how it's going to be spent. So our timeframe really doesn't go until 2024. We sort of had to get a bearing, an idea by June to say, hey, we're spending this much money and it's going in A, B, and C. And we can't just determine, you know, to change 900 buildings into state classrooms and to sink into the 1928 building at a later date for the bond issue, obviously, for this one purpose of the $110 million.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Peters, you have something else?
Yeah, let, let me just circle back here, just because this might be, I'm just looking at the, the building project, the renovation, hold on here. Another option to mothball the 1928 building is $1,042,300, correct?
Correct.
All right. And then to demo it was how much? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip through all my notes here.
Nine million to demo? Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah.
I think it was roughly 250 to 300,000.
Okay.
The 240 is included, the 240 is included in the project base cost.
Okay. All right. I'll just hold off for now. Thanks.
Okay. You know, I would recommend, we've got a lot to digest on this issue. Kathy, can we put this as an item on our next meeting? Table this until the next meeting?
Of course.
Okay, why don't, I would move that we table this item until our next meeting, where we can get more information. We will try and disseminate as much as we can prior to the meeting and have a further conversation. And Meg, we certainly would welcome your input on this as well, and we'll reach out to both Ira and Richard as we're going along, I think. So can I get a motion to table this? Oh, sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
Just one thing, when you say, obviously, we can put it on the next agenda, would you want the exact item? Or do you just want discussion of the 1928 building?
I'd have discussion of 1928 until we actually hammer out. Be at least a two item, two meeting extension. Fortunately, we've got a whole lot of meetings coming up.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. So we'll put it on a discussion. We should track back with the building committee and Meg, and just you guys have more discussion about exactly what, you know, I think it's a good idea to table it. So we're clear.
Great. Okay, can I have a motion to table this to a future date?
I'll make a motion to table agenda item E1 to a later date.
Joe Capitafaro, second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing now, is it? Okay. Very good. That brings us to item F, I believe, executive session. There is none. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Before we leave, I will leave you with our quote of the evening. The future depends on what we do in the present. That is Mahatma Gandhi. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the February 16, 2021 town council meeting.
Second.
You have a motion to second. Any discussion on that? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Good night.